I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City Council Budget Meeting, Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, 4:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted in person in the City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A Section 403A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 88987212598 and password 778600 or via computer at the link provided. Members of the public may also submit comments by using the form on the city's website under cities, excuse me, government/citycouncil/contact/citycouncil. This is a budget work session of the City Council and not a business meeting of the City Council. The meeting is open to the public, but not a public hearing. The chairperson shall conduct the work session with the committee members and may elect to call upon the public in attendance for either questions or to obtain input and information. All work products will be developed by consensus and forward as advisory to the City Council for further matter warranting legislative action by the City Council at the business meetings so posted and assembled. Call this meeting to order. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
Going to do roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Trenchmontane.
Present.
And I'm Mayor Brink, also present. And present also are City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Assistant Larissa Ricketts. We're going to do 23/125/01, order to approve the minutes from the City Council Budget Meeting held March 14th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Public participation, do we have any? No. Okay. New business, 23126/01, the presentation of 2023, 2024 Municipal Budget. And before Steve Buck will be doing this presentation, before he does, seeing as this is the very first time the City Council's in charge of something like this, I, we no longer have a Budget Committee. Last year, the citizens of Sanford voted to have the City Council handle the budget as we meet year-round and view the budget on a weekly basis instead of just five meetings in March, which is what the Budget Committee used to do. With that in mind, I'd like to take a moment to introduce the City Council, starting with Peter Trenchmontane. Would you just mind waving your hand so everyone will know who we're talking about? Because a lot of people don't know who we are. So Peter is our newest member. Peter is a business owner in Sanford. He spends every Monday morning, meeting with me, the poor guy, to learn about different issues that the city needs to face each week. So he's really on a learning curve like this, but he's doing the best. I'm pretty impressed that he's able to give his Monday mornings to that. Next is Jonathan Martel. Jonathan has been on the council for several years. He really cares for everyone in Sanford and takes this job seriously as City Counselor. Even when he is sick, he zooms in. Ann Hanselman. Ann has also been a counselor for many years. She is the owner of several businesses in Sanford, my favorite being Franny's. Ann is an accountant whom we all depend upon to clarify parts of the budget. And she's helped me tremendously understand the budget. Next is Bob Stackpole, who has been on the School Committee for multiple years, plus on City Council. Bob has a great knowledge of how Sanford works because of his long history serving Sanford. Bob and I also, just a sideline, we were on the School Committee together, which he's quite the jokester. Mara Hurley, also Deputy Mayor, has not only served as a counselor, but she was our first mayor after the charter was established. Her job is to step into the mayor's role if I have to be absent for any reason. Because of the number of years she has served, she always does a great job. Mara is also a business owner in Sanford. I am Becky Brink. I have also served multiple committees, including the City Council and School Committees. I was lucky enough to serve as the junior high principal in Sanford, giving me a different insight into the budget process. While addressing the budget, we consider the following as a council: how we can provide the needed services for our citizens while keeping in mind that it has to be affordable. Everyone on the council serves because they love Sanford and want to make it a great place to live. We would like to hear from the public on the budget. After this meeting at 6:00 PM, we will have a City Council meeting. During that meeting, there will be a section on public hearings. The hearing tonight is about the budget, so feel free to come in and share live or zoom in. Now, back to the business. Steve Buck, would you please take it away?
Thank you. So as you can see, we have, tonight's presentation is up on the screen. I wish I could take credit for the appearance of this, but I cannot.
Want to pictures?
I could take credit, but it would not, it would not be accurate. So, yeah, no, we don't have any cartoons in here, but we've spiffed.
Never going to live up to the school then.
Spiffed it up. All right. So this is intended to, previously, in the prior presentations, I've given you all of the numbers and the summary aspects and such under that. Tonight's presentation starts, for the first time, to drill down on prior questions and points raised by the City Council, trying to provide you with that information. And at the end of, at the end of the presentation, after going through this, we have the, it's called a cut sheet in the presentation, but I view it as being an option sheet. It's not about the cuts. It's about the options that the council has available to them as far as making adjustments to our budget. So the first pieces of information that they will go over tonight, that the council had requested, was the contracted cleaner for the Memorial Gym, police and fire department command structure and staffing levels, anticipated retirements, you know, looking at who's going to be replaced in the coming year, what those fiscal impacts are or are not, outside agency support and documents, police department capital improvements specific to the dual-band radios, the use of opioid funds for this year and in future years, position or positions provided by the state of Maine that we also provide here for the city and looking at the value and the net return on those, the River Street project for potential savings for capital improvements and additional use of fund balance. So we have slides presenting on all of those topics. First is the contracted cleaner for Memorial Gym. So the question was, arose as to contracting that service versus providing it in-house with, on a part-time position. Here's a listing that Parks and Recreation Director went through for contracted services within the region that provide services within the region, and all of those were no. So ServPro, Truston Gomez, the maids, the maids of Southern New Hampshire. And ultimately, we came to the conclusion that in order to get custodial services in the next fiscal year for the Memorial Gym, that we would budget for a 20-hour position at $20,290. And there's a further slide on that. Next, there were questions raised, and this, I apologize, this slide is way too busy, but this is the entire organizational chart for the city and the positions that are encompassed in there. And specifically, we're going to split off the police and fire command structures. But we can always go back and reference the various positions in each of the departments here on this organizational chart. So in the police department, the current command structure is, obviously, we have a police chief, we have a deputy chief of operations, we have a major of support and logistics, and we have a professional development and property management, which is now a civilian position. So that's occupied by a retired assistant chief that was put in place predominantly by, to work on the MLEAP certification and maintain that going forward. Also in the department, so you have, you have a chief, you have an assistant chief, you have one major of operations, three lieutenants, three sergeants, four detectives, one court officer that's currently a blue pen officer, and we're talking about in the future, we plan for that in the wage and classification study, to potentially converting that to a civilian position in the future. Currently, there are three school resource officers, 20 additional patrol, two officers in the mental health unit, two clinical social workers in the mental health unit, and the professional development, as I mentioned just a moment ago. In parallel with the fire department, you have a fire chief, you have an assistant fire chief of administration and assistant fire chief in operations. So currently, we have one chief, two assistant chiefs, four captains, eight lieutenants, one fire marshal, 36 firefighter medics on top of that. And in tonight's budget, you will see there are two additional firefighter medics that are still within the budget, and the cost of that is on the option sheet for consideration tonight as well. Looking at the known holes at this point in time, in Department of Public Works, we have one employee eligible for retirement. There's been no notice given for that, that one employee. That employee's been with us for an extended period of time, has been eligible for probably a decade. Police Department, there are seven officers that are eligible for retirement this year, and five of those seven have given us notice already. So when you combine that with the number of officers that are already leaving the department before we get into the next fiscal year, there's a significant hole that has to be bridged there over this coming year. The fire department has seven or eight, depending on how you look at that, that are eligible, and none have given notice of retirement at this point in time. So the police department, drilling down on that further, when we look at the number of individuals that are on each of the shifts, so currently, we have, the midnight shift has two supervisors and two officers. The minimum staffing, they can drop down to one supervisor and three officers overnight, so four on, on either of those two scenarios. The day shift is comprised of two supervisors and six officers. The day shift can drop to one supervisor and four officers. And the evening shift is two supervisors and six officers, and they can drop to one supervisor and four officers. So there are, there are times when, within the police department, when they're operating under those scenarios, that not all man-hours that are lost have to be covered by overtime. Also, within the criminal investigation division, there's one supervisor and three detectives, four in the division as a whole. The mental health unit is comprised of one supervisor and one officer, so two uniformed officers there, and two civilian clinicians, which is our mental health unit. And the mental health unit supervisor also assists the CID supervisor in the absence of a supervisor within that division. The school resource officers for fiscal year '24, we're currently budgeting for two officers. There currently are three officers, but in fiscal year '24, we're budgeting for two, and I know that's still an open dialogue between the school department, the City Council, and city administration as well. So we have numbers on what those scenarios look like. We also have a court officer, that's one uniformed officer. Currently, we're looking at, in the future, converting that over to a non-civil, a non-blue pen office. Typically, we envisioned that that likely would be occupied by a retired police officer. He or she would come back, occupy, because they're fully trained in the areas that they would need to be trained, could come back and assume this as a retirement type of position as opposed to being on the street. Currently, I have one of our patrol officers that's assigned specifically as a traffic officer supervised by the patrol supervisor who's on shift, and that position rotates around hours, so they're not always on the street in the same, same hours and time of day. And then currently, we have one main drug enforcement agency, assigned officer, so that's an officer that's employed by us, but it's fully reimbursed by the state MDEA. If, if the choice is ultimately made that we go from three school resource officers to two, and we assume one of those positions back in-house, we will work with MDEA to assign two officers within that division. So we have the associated expense and revenue budgeted that way in our, in our book currently. Again, on the options page, you can see if you take that in or out, what that looks like in the overall budget. Moving over to the fire department, currently, we're staffing at 12 per shift. This drops to a minimum of 11 when someone is out. After that, they call in. The department is trying to go to a shift of 13, so we still need four additional officers to make that 13 per shift. There's two of those positions in this year's budget to work towards filling that, that ramp up that the city's been working on for a number of years. Okay, I've covered that. Next, on the outside agencies, additional support information was requested for that, so that's been forwarded to the council. You can take a look at that. For all of those support agencies, and I think that was predominantly asked, asked for, to see if there was any opportunity to change the funding level to those outside agencies, dependent upon what they might have mustered through PPP or other federal assistance during the COVID period of time whereby the city's contribution may be able to be changed and/or further reduced. With outside agencies, for this year, all of those were budgeted the same as last year. There's no increase or decrease in any of those levels of funding for the agencies. We no longer take on new applications for outside agencies. That's been the policy for quite a number of years. In fact, I think almost for as long as, as I've been here, if not before that. The only change in that particular category was the $696 that previously was the membership dues paid to the Chamber of Commerce was under this department. That's been moved over to the council's dues, so no change in the funding, it's just a change in the location. Next, we had a question on the police department dual-band portable radios. This is one of those elements, you could see this coming for, for a while. The last purchase of the radios was not dual-band. Those radios were inexpensive at the time. They have outlived their useful life. And one of the things that came from the November 2022 active shooter incident was the difficulty in communications across UHF and VHF combined communications. Incident command was, was set up. Communication issues were difficult there. Unified command would have, would have further exacerbated that. And the police department did not have an adequate ability to communicate with outside agencies that rely predominantly on VHF as opposed to UHF. So in this slide, we talk about the, the UHF frequency only, that the current radios are. Only one of the few agencies in York, we are, one of the few agencies that still utilize UHF. Utilizes a bandwidth now to improve signal penetration in the schools, commercial and retail buildings. We know in the South Sanford District, that's a difficulty with cellular communications as well as with portable radios. Only key personnel can communicate directly with partner agencies and then disseminate to the staff within the police department. So the dual-band radios will allow for intercity communications, both UHF frequencies into radios for the school department, Department of Public Works, and the fire department. It also will allow for communications with most of the, most of the agencies in our area who utilize VHF, and it would allow for the communication of portable to portable with most law enforcement in Maine. So in the capital program, I'm not pulling off the top of my head, I think it was 89,000 and change, it was the, the capital purchase price. We're proposing to do that on a seven-year lease purchase to reduce that one-year fiscal There was a question asked as far as the opioid settlements. We have several slides in here on that. What we know about the opioid settlements right now, that you had the, the large three that originally, we call them the big three, that settled, and we've received funding under that first distribution at this point. Those settlements could, brought, bringing $100 million to the state over 15 years to use for prevention, treatment, and harm reduction. Cities, towns, and counties and school districts have until April 18th to join this next round of settlements. There's another four, which includes CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, and another that I'm, I'm not thinking of at the moment. The funds would add an additional 141 million to Maine, is already, that Maine is already receiving. And Sanford has currently received to date $114,440. All of that is booked for as revenue in here, so it's actually been received. So that's in your, your budget book. I can, I can point that out to you here this evening. The difficulty has, has been, and Ronnie knows this as our finance director, they had an estimate as to what we'd receive and when. None of that is held true. You can't reconcile against that. So I'm, I'm, I've been extremely hesitant, especially in this year's budget cycle, where we're just starting on the first round of settlements, to book according to the estimates, but actually book what we've actually received. And in future years, you can see that, oh, well, I'll wait, I'll wait till we get to that slide, what our future years distributions will be and what we'll average. So we've booked that $114,440 as offsetting revenue, and that's on general ledger account, So here's a very busy slide. This is, this shows you the distributions, the percentages that you see. So it lists, for example, the first column is Andescoggin County. It shows the percent of local government payments. So Andescoggin County is getting 1.6799% of the local government payments. The state's holding back 60%, and then we're going to, they are redistributing, pursuant to the agreements, the other 40% back to the local agencies. So in this call-out, Sanford receives 2.69% under the current settlements, and that percentage, if it goes through, as our legal counsel currently is negotiating with the state attorney general's office, we're receiving the same 2.69% of the next series of settlements. So in here, you can see that the city of Sanford is to receive $422,426 over the next 15-year span. That's under the current settlement agreements. When you take the pending settle agreement, which again is CBS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allegra, when you add those in, and there's another smaller one in there, I forget what they call that soup, but it amounts to about $5,000 to $6,000 per year for us, when you add all of those settlements together, we anticipate over the next 15 years to receive $793,000 and change. So that's an average of $52,908 per year. So when you look at those long-range projections over the next 15 years, none of it makes sense to me. Like, if you go back up to, to the other slide, you know, $42,000 in one year, $11,000 in the next, $34,000, $34,000, then it drops down to $16,000, and it's back up to $34,000. I just, I don't know why. Okay. Are there any questions today? Because I know I'm moving quite rapidly here.
Steve, with the opioid funds, I know at some point we may have passed this, you were able to use some of those funds to reimburse some of our costs. Are we still in that phase where we're able to reimburse the municipality in some way, or have we done that and now we're moving on?
Oh, no. It's an ongoing basis. So, so the $114,000, we're applying that towards the mental health unit at this point in time. We have that level of funding, we have another $48,000 that comes through the Maine Options Program for our participation in there as well. And as Chief Anderson knows, the state of Maine is looking at us extensively. It was DC Small that worked with the state to create the Maine Options Program, has been very beneficial to us. We get a $48,000 offsetting grant per year that helps us towards our blue pen officers in there, plus we get a half-time clinician that comes through Sweetser from that relationship. As far as the opioid settlement funds, we, we view that we're applying that towards the mental health unit as the overall support, because again, it's two, two blue pen officers. We also are applying $110,000 a year of opera funds towards the employed clinician that we have in that department as well. You're welcome.
May I? And so, this is great, Steve, so far, on the fire department staffing, there's a little bit less detail, I think, than the police department staffing. I'm actually more familiar with the police department staffing because of some of their reporting at Public Safety. So can you just, at like a 30,000-foot level, explain a little bit more in detail the fire department? So for example, whereas the police department would have two supervisors and six officers on the day shift, does that cross over to the fire department where you'd have two captains and, do you know what I'm saying? I'm really trying to understand that piece, and I don't see that detail.
Yeah, so within, within the fire department, let me flip back to that slide. In the fire department, we have two assistant chiefs, the second of which, no, come right up here. The second of which.
You might know better than you do.
Just came on board last year, but then we're yanking from the position, and we forced him to be acting chief, so.
Hi, Eric Smith. I'm currently interim fire chief, was previously and soon to return to assistant chief operations. So the way the fire department's broken down, we have the chief and the two assistant chiefs. We work on Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday, depending on the city's schedule. Then the four shifts are made up of 12 individuals. So there's one captain that oversees all operations in the city for the 24-hour shift that they're on, and there are two lieutenants. Now, previously, one was supervising the Springvale District in-house, one was doing the South District in-house with the changing and staffing. That lieutenant from the South District's been brought to the central station, and they manage the ladder company and a lot of the work of the, you know, day-to-day floor work. Underneath them, they each have an operator or multiple firefighters assigned to the different pieces of apparatus. So right now, there are two on the ambulance. There's a captain, a firefighter operator, and a firefighter on the lead engine. There's the lieutenant and a firefighter on the tower truck. And then in Springvale, you have a lieutenant, a firefighter operator, and sometimes a firefighter in the backseat of the engine, and then two firefighters on the ambulance. And I, sorry, I misspeak by saying firefighter, they're all firefighter paramedic or firefighter EMT trained. We cross-train, we do everything, but in terms, that's just how I, by rank, that is what they're titled as. Any other questions?
Thank you, that was helpful.
Okay. You know, we're up.
I don't know if we're doing a Q and A a little bit later, but I was wondering if Chief Anderson could give us a little bit more information around the radio updates that are listed.
Sure.
Whenever that's appropriate.
I think now would be a great time.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Good afternoon. So Counselor, you want to know about the UHF, VHF radios?
Yeah, it looks like it's limited to handheld. I just want to make sure that we're getting the expectations out there, because VHF and UHF, yes, they do work pretty comfortably, but if you're talking five watts out of handheld from airport, you probably aren't going to.
We actually reach it quite well, because we, we do have repeaters and, and there are several boosters in the city that help us amplify that. But so the, the biggest problem we had, and Eric, do you want to hold up our radio current, our current radio? It's butt-sized of a Walmart radio. It's not a police radio. It never was designed to be a law enforcement radio. It is a commercial radio for commercial applications. But when the previous chief wanted to purchase radios, that's what he said we could purchase. So that's what we got. A dual-band radio is two radios in one. The antenna's much longer because a UHF radio antenna is different than a VHF radio antenna. So they, they take two antennas, and they take two radios and they squash it into one package. So it's a larger package, it'll be larger than that. But what it will allow us to do is maintain our inner-city communication, so we can talk direct to the fire department, the Department of Public Works, and the school department, but also reach out to our partner agencies, partner law enforcement agencies in the community. So for instance, if there was a bad accident by Walmart and Wells came over to help us, our officers can't talk on their portable radios to Kenabunk, who would come to help us. They could talk to Wells. They could talk to Wells, because Wells has UHF, and they're the only UHF one in the, in the neighborhood. If the sheriff's department came over to help, we couldn't talk to them. If they were directing traffic on one end and we were on the other, and we were like, well, can you hold traffic? We're gonna let our side go? It's not gonna work. And we figured this out during the event at the school, when we had multiple agencies arrive to help us, and we basically put, made sure like a Sanford officer was in a group so that at least we would have communications with one person in that group. And this echoes right up to the, right up the chain of command, like, I can't talk to Kenabunk or anyone else. So our initial proposal was to, was to, to solve this problem. And yes, they are expensive radios, but this is a radio system that will last the city for probably close to a decade.
So, is it limited to handhelds, or are you getting car radios?
The, the car radios, we, we, so we, we used to be VHF. We left those radios in the car, and then we transferred over to UHF, we added the radio in. So they have two radios in the cars. We had them anyway, so there was no sense throwing them away. We just left them installed. So radio, like, in the car, we could do that. They just gotta pick up a different radio, turn it on, get the right channel. Now with this, the radios we're talking about, getting the portable radios, they're banks of, there's, there's banks of channels. So there's four banks, each has sixteen channels, and we can pre-program and preload them, and it will, it will, it will switch between UHF and VHF all on its own. So the first channel can be our primary on UHF. If we wanted it to be, the second channel could be Kenabunk on VHF. And the third channel could be back to UHF with Wells, and the fourth channel could be DPW, and the fifth channel could be the fire department. So it gives us a lot of flexibility. As, as you all know, technology changes rather quickly. We, we searched for some good pricing. I, I can tell you that a local department paid seven thousand dollars a radio, and we are far, far less than that. So we do, we, we tried to do the best we could to get the capabilities for inner, communication, interoperability, but be fiscally responsible as well.
Chief Anderson, I want to thank you for being so proactive about after the incident at the high school, that we knew that was an issue, and addressing it, and getting a very good price on those radios. That is really fantastic. Jonathan, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just, thank you, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the request was gonna be sufficient.
What, what is the request?
Uh, you, you know, we're talking about just a handheld, I want to make sure.
Yeah, like, just to correct, I, I think, Steve, you said eighty-nine thousand, but it's not eighty-nine thousand. It's, it's significantly, Ron, did you have the number? Yeah, exactly. It's a hundred and eighty thousand.
Well, it's a hundred one-way.
I, we just want to make sure that you got the right figure, but, like, we anticipate this is going to serve for quite some time. In the, honestly, we, you know, I don't know, you can't go back and change things, but the investment we put into the radios we have now was, was not a good investment, because it didn't, they're not lasting us. However, our plan is, and I talked to Mr. Busier about this, is the extra radios we have on UHF, we're gonna give to the school department, because they need radios anyways, and I think they have some repairs that are necessary on some of their radios. And Steve was like, yeah, right on, we'll take those. So we're gonna keep them in service in the city, just they'll be hand-me-downs.
Yeah.
So I, I can't resist, so if the Kenabunk staff shows up in a Tesla, will the radio still work with that?
Only if the battery, only if the battery lasts.
I had to go there, I had to do it.
My understanding is they run the lights at the same time, and I'm actually shut off after a half hour, like, no, it's not gonna work.
Chief, while we have you up here, can you talk about the command structure in the police department? Because one of the items under examination here tonight is the second major's position.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll take you back to August of last year, when I presented this command structure to the, to the council, and you were very supportive, and we absolutely appreciate it, and granted us the, you granted us approval to implement it. And so I, we wanted, and I, I believe I said back then, we wanted to implement it over two budget seasons, so that there wasn't a large impact on the city all at once. So in January, in this current budget, we implemented the, the support majors' position, and we anticipate that we would want to, thank you, we would want to implement the majors of operations in July with this next budget. So that's why we include it in the budget. If you recall, when the presentation and, and I know Counselor Tranche Montagny went here at the time, but there's a, there's a laundry list of responsibilities that the staff at the police department have, just to maintain certification with the state, to maintain required reporting for, both for MLEAP and for federal, and Department of Corrections, and, and follow requests, which has been, I know it's the bane of Steve's existence, it's been the bane of my existence for the past eighteen months, twenty months as well. To effectively support our, our boots-on-the-ground folks, they need to have the, the command structure behind them that are handling up these necessities so that they can keep doing their job. And I think the council, the Public Safety Committee certainly got some information directly from them on one of the more recent public safety meetings, when the, the frontline supervisors were able to relay to them what their division of time was. If they're in the station handling what should be a command staff responsibility, and they're, they're doing it, then they're, what they're not doing is providing support for the folks in the street who are handling calls. And what they're not doing is ensuring we have a, we have quality control measures in place, and that we're delivering that excellent law enforcement service that we're, that we're pledged to provide. And so they get stretched thin. If we can't, if we can't fix that for them, then we're not doing, you know, our job at the top. So we appreciate that you approved that, and I think, I feel like they did a really good job of explaining how crucial that is for that position to be implemented, inconsistent with the, with the over-two-year budget period. So we moved Deputy Chief Strout into the civilian position, he's taken over MLEAP, which is a job all on its own, and it's a job that's continually updated. So as MLEAP, as MLEAP standards are met, it's not, you just don't meet them once and you're one and done. You have to maintain that for the rest of your existence as a law enforcement agency. And, and not having someone assigned to that, to that attention would mean basically things would fall through the cracks. And then we wouldn't maintain those standards, and then we would lose our certification as a, as a, as an accredited department. But more importantly, we wouldn't be doing the things we're supposed to be doing. And that's why the accreditation program is so important. It is a, it is a, it's a measure of your organization with contemporary and, and expected law enforcement standards. And if, so if we're not taking that measurement regularly, then, you know, your temperature gets out of whack, and then you find out you're sick, but that's too late at that point. There's a problem. We're responding to, we're making changes because it's a, it's a symptom of a problem, and we want to make those changes before it becomes a problem, before there's a lawsuit, before somebody gets injured, before there's some bad thing that happens. Does that help with the command structure? So this would be the last piece of the command structure, then we would, we would be at a spot, correct? That we're, that again, I mentioned that we expect this, anticipate this to hold the agency for probably the next ten years.
Chief Anderson, I want to thank you for changing the face of the Sanford Police Department. You have been cited in many articles that Sanford is now an example of how a police department needs to be run, and including the social workers that are now part of the whole process. I would like to also say, I think the dog is a part of that, too. That's a, if you haven't been in there yet, go in and meet, what's the name?
Winston.
Winston?
Yeah.
Very cute.
Listen, thank you so much, and it, honestly, it's the, it's the team. It's the, the officers and civilians and the staff that we've had at the police department that have, they're the ones doing the job every day. We can put out directives and, and orders or whatever, but it's, they're getting it done every day. So it's not coming from me, or Eric, or, or Major Gagne. It comes from them. What they have found is they have the ability, they've been empowered, to deliver excellent law enforcement service. And if you, if you give folks the ability to do that, they want to do a good job, so that's what they're doing. It's really them. They, they, they do an outstanding job for you, for the community, for the city. And it makes our jobs easier, for sure, but more importantly, it's, we exist for one thing, right? To serve our community. And, and I think what happens a lot of times is segments of municipalities, segments of federal government, think that they exist to serve themselves, and we don't. We exist to serve the people. And keeping that in perspective, I think, is an important thing for, for government workers.
Thank you. Steve, I think you're now on again.
Okay. Then if you could bring the presentation back up for us, thank you. So the question was raised as far as what does the city have for positions that may be a duplication of what was offered at the state level, and if so, what's the value for us? And basically, I interpreted it as, why do we do it this way? So we're able to come up with four positions that draw that, that parallel. The first is the mental health first responder. So this position was just hired in the last budget. You can see a fully burdened cost of a hundred and ten thousand, and the revenue associated to that, with that, was the city council chose through the use of the opera funds to fund that position for three years, at which time, my interpretation again, is that we would know if there's a net benefit to having that position or positions within the department, so that we could better gauge the, the return on that investment. So the direct parallel is Department of Health and Human Services also has licensed clinical social workers to respond to crisis situations and non-crisis situations. But what we found, when we first started to address homelessness, was that there was a missing link, that through this, through this exploratory and evolutionary process, we found that by and large, there's sufficient resources within our region to address the individual, and I have to stress individual needs, again, stress individual needs. What was missing was somebody to make that contact out in the field, so to speak. Find them in the field, where they're located, establish a trust relationship that, that only then could you get them to the point that they could make a decision to take available services, and then make, make those known and available to them. So, again, I credit the, the police department for the phenomenal work. Deputy Chief Small was, was the first person that was instrumental in that regard. He, I can remember when we first started, he went out in the field, and before long, we had an Excel spreadsheet, everybody knows I like Excel, that had all the attributes for the people, right? So we, we knew, we knew reasonably why they were out there, why they were homeless and such and to that. There was the common thread of mental health, unaddressed mental health issues and drug abuse, that most, most of the time, the two associated directly. So in that, that evolution, it became known that the police department became that missing link. They were the link that got the individuals to the level of services that they needed, if it was re-establishing their identity, getting them into medical services, getting them into rehab, all the way up to getting a housing voucher and getting them housed. And they have had extreme success in that. So the state does have social workers, but they weren't, they weren't employed by us. They weren't providing that missing piece that was so, so critical that we now know in our mental health unit. The next is the fire marshal. And if, and if we get to that detail tonight, I've got this on the option sheet. We have five other slides pertaining to the fire marshal's position as well. The state does have a fire marshal, State Office of Fire Marshals. When we, if you were to look at those slides, you will see that we, we are one of four communities in the state with a capacity at the level that we have. We can do anything and everything that the state fire marshal can do, except for issue barrier-free permits. They won't relinquish that to us. Everything else, we do in-house. You would see that plan review is three to five business days for us, for, for substantive construction projects, and that's sixteen weeks plus at the fire marshal's office. We view the capacity that we've built as being one of the primary objectives of having the fire marshal's position. Fire marshal position also, as you, as you will see, incorporates education, various levels of inspection, inspection oversight, and a whole host of elements that previously were, were held by other positions within the fire department that we no longer have. The technical capacity has been wrapped entirely into that particular position. Fire marshal sits on all pre-apps, site, site plan review, and the like. The next position is the electrical inspector. So previously, we relied upon the state electrical inspector. That was, that was called when, when, when the need for a commercial inspection was prevalent, back when construction was at a lower level than what it is currently. They would call the, the state electrical inspector, and they would wait quite a period of time to perfect that inspection, for that inspector to come down from the state, even though he or she was assigned to our particular area. That position, as no different than other state positions, was very much overwhelmed. When that overwhelmed position, person retired, that was the first juncture where we picked that person up in retirement and, and employed that individual on a contract basis, we've had that relationship for a number of years now, whereby the electrical inspection fee pays for the inspector. So that is at a cost of fifty-five thousand dollars per year, based upon the, the volume that he's doing. The city takes in sixty-four thousand dollars worth of revenue on those same permits, so we, we net just about nine thousand dollars on that. But in exchange for that, we have the electrical inspector here three days per week. So there's no delay as far as getting inspection work done. It gets done timely. And then the fourth position is this contracted options clinician, not directly employed by us, but this was the first, in the mental health unit, this was the first clinician that was, came into our ranks. And again, I want to thank Deputy Chief Small for his work with the state of Maine in creating the options program, whereby the options program provides us with forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars per year of, of funding. This is, well, this is the third year of that agreement. Hopefully, it's able to be renewed because of its success. But we received forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars that we use, again, for offsets towards the, the uniformed officers that we have in here, and we get this clinician half-time. So a minimum of twenty hours a week, but that person is housed in one of our offices, so we, we see that person for a fair amount of the work week. Any questions on those four? Moving on, so the River Street, that, the River Street Reconstruction Project that's coming this summer, it is not part of our RACE grant, it's, it's a former and continued municipal partnership initiative, an MPI, where the state of Maine will, will put six hundred and sixty thousand, Matt, or I've lost track, six sixty or, huh?
Six hundred even.
Six hundred, six hundred even, thousand dollars into the, into the project. We have gone through several years now during COVID, we've had great difficulty in getting competitive bids, and those bids have been high, but this bid came in very, very well. We had, we had a bid at two point two-six million. There were some savings there, according to what we had budgeted as far as engineering, but that savings is starting to wane off. So it's, it's under redesign right now. It was missed by the original design team in there, that we had to have sixteen, not fourteen-foot travel lanes. And this was picked up from the astute observations of the department, they went out and actually combed. I don't know how many hundreds of cones that were put out there. They combed the entire project. They took our largest, our ladder truck, and they drove that through the coned intersections on the side lanes and everything else, and it did not fit. The fourteen-foot travel lanes and the intersection design did not match up as far as that working aspect. So the project has been completely redesigned at this point in time. We're in the process of working with our local contractor, LeVite, as far as the recalculation on quantities and such and to that, to see, see where we're at. That's a long explanation to say that the, the savings are not known at this point in time. And I would, I would ask the council, as you look at these type of projects, to take the, if there are savings, to take them at the time that the savings are known, you know, once we close a project out, if there's savings, and do that in a discussion. Matt Hill works feverishly to constantly update the, the next Matt Hill works feverishly to constantly update the the next five years of the work plan. Anytime savings are found, they get redirected. There's buffers, there's buffers in there for for contract contingencies that may or may not get consumed. And it's always in that balancing act of we know there's more need in the portfolio than there is funding. So no different no different than the last couple of years when the department was was getting toward GRN. We have a reasonable estimate of the reserve, the the unexpendited fund balance that would be left within the department, and we've brought that back and asked the council to allow us to do some light capital maintenance that doesn't interfere with utilities and such under that. And that's been wildly successful because we've gone into those those smaller side streets and neighborhoods that, when you do the scoring under the engineered program that's that's being revamped as we speak, they're they're down, they're way down, they're many, many years down. And we've had huge satisfaction by being able to get to them far earlier for a smaller investment, bringing bringing a lot of satisfaction.
I just wanted to back up to make a comment. Whose idea was it to do the cone thing? Excellent. And I think it was fantastic that you guys and the fire department worked together. You didn't let it just happen. You wanted to see if that fire truck could make it down. That was brilliant because if we had done all that construction and it didn't work, that would not be good. So I congratulate you on that idea. How many volunteers did you have to put out all those cones?
Three.
Three. That must have been fun. But thank you very much. Next time, I'd like to go out and ride in the fire truck if that's possible. That would be okay, great. Thank you again for working as a team. The more that we have the different departments in Sanford working as a team to solve the problems, the better our community will be. So thank you very much. And Steve, thank you for overseeing all that because leadership is a part of that, so.
I didn't oversee. I was on-site to observe, and it did not work. So I I too want to thank Peter Smith for his practical application and challenging. It all works on paper, right? But it didn't work in real life. So thank you very much for that. And that's going to become an ongoing practice from this point forward. And we've got that straightened out with a RACE grant, right, Matt? Thank you. All right. The next question that was raised was additional use of fund balance. So according to general, what do we call it? The Government Finance Office Agency? Yeah, not my favorite people. The appropriate fund balance level should be sixteen point five to sixteen point seven percent of operating expenditures for the general fund. So using the sixteen point five percent of the municipal budget, we should maintain an undesignated fund balance of six million and fifty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. City, I've got a graphic in here that shows the use of fund balance over the last number of years, well, quite a period of years. We've been consistently using eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's been very sustainable. The fund balance has not detracted significantly, well, not at all, for the use of that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The last few years, the fund balance has been well-kept, actually, it had an increase last year. So we're proposing, in this budget that you have before you, that we we boost that on an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one million dollars of use this year. That would reduce your fund balance to approximately six point five million dollars from the seven point five million dollars that that is there currently. In the option sheet, you will see that I've built that out for you, that you can consider using any any amount that you feel appropriate that is different from that one million dollars that we have in the budget currently. So from our auditor, we have five classifications of fund balance. The governmental fund balance is reported in five classifications, which is non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. It's the unassigned fund balance that we're talking about here. It is not assigned or committed. It's not part of your reserves for capital program. It's not part of future payments that need to be paid to meet payroll, health insurance purposes, or such under that. It's not a fiduciary fund that has been set up and is restricted as far as its utilization, as far as its interest or principal is concerned. The unassigned truly is, as I see it, as a as a businessperson, it's the it's the net of operations that's been retained. It's funds that you haven't expended or revenues generated in excess of what was predicted. Thank God, we didn't have to pay taxes on it. But it's it's a net of operations that's there for unrestricted use. Here's how that those balance, those balances, the various balances have changed over the last three years, the blue being twenty twenty, the green being twenty twenty-one, and the yellow being twenty twenty-two. So you've seen upward growth on all three of those areas to include our unassigned fund balance between the city, and these are combined balances between the city and the school. And I would note that by having a positive fund balance such as this, this allows us to cash flow. So when I when I work with our treasurer on a bi-weekly basis, we're always looking at the cash flow, how the investments are timed, how those investments are rolled out in accordance with the need for cash at various times of year, ensuring that those investments are fully insured, not not at risk, they're invested under the prudent investor portfolio. And because of that, you have no no tax anticipation notes or anything of that nature that are that are inherent in some communities. So the historical use of fund balance, you can you can see, starting back in oh eight, there was a use of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. We've been at, they did a one-year jump at eleven twelve to eight hundred and fifty, went back to the six hundred and fifty thousand. From fourteen forward, it was at eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, again, sustainable. It's not impacted the the fund balance, that utilization. In fiscal year seventeen eighteen, there were some prior year unexpendited balances that were brought forward, and similar again in fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two. So again, the administrative recommendation that's carried in the budget here tonight is that we use a million dollars of fund balance, but you'll have the option to see what additional amounts or lesser amounts will do as far as impacting the budget. The fiscal cliff, I really liked the school department's use of the big cliff picture, right? Cheryl, I really liked the the cliff picture. So the use of fund balance, and and Council Stackpole is always talking to us about, you know, not wanting to fall off the fiscal cliff in future years. So again, the use of fund balance, again, as a as expressed, I have no fear that the million-dollar utili-utilization this year, that is sustainable going forward. I don't believe that creates a fiscal cliff. It has in the past when we used a one-time injection, went up above a million, and then we stepped back to eight hundred and fifty thousand. There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit, hitting the budget. I don't see that as being a problem going forward. And then the use of reserves. So last year, we closed the books with a strong balance, and two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of petroleum reserves were set aside. We've pulled that forward this year, right, to to return that back to the taxpayers. We had a good year. We we could you could reasonably foresee the continued petroleum impacts were going to hit us. We set that money aside. The eighty thousand dollars in training reserve that was specifically set aside, again, in the fire department, we have multiple individuals going for paramedic rating in there, and it was that reserve was set aside to continue that educational program to to bolster the department. So there's three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of total use of reserves. The the training requirement is somewhat unpredicted in the future. This will get us to a very good point in combination with what we have in the budget. The petroleum reserves, that has started to mitigate some. If there's not another war, if there's not a, you know, there's not, all of the ifs. But the reserve that was set up last year in anticipation for this year, I think it is fair, just, and reasonable to be pulling that forward, and I don't see that that sets us up for the fiscal cliff. Other topics that we brought forward from the three seven, the March seventh municipal budget presentation, were the number of vacant positions within the budget, the number of new positions that were in the budget, Memorial Gym, taking that on for the for the first full fiscal year, roadway infrastructure plan, the fire station lease and pre-development activities associated with the the coming referendum vote to construct two new fire departments, and the recent state projection on revenue sharing. Vacant positions, as of March fourteenth, when this presentation was put together, the police department is vacant, six police officers, but we have two conditional offers out with five retirements coming. Fire department, we are absent one firefighter that. No, no, going through the process now.
Currently testing.
Currently testing, yeah. Department of Public Works, we are absent an equipment operator, four. We've been absent that for a while. Two equipment operators, one in the highway and one at the transfer station, those are EO ones, and one mechanics position. And we've been absent that for quite a while. But I want to give call out my appreciation to the mechanics department. They they, by all accounts, our fleet is in in excellent shape. They've done a wonderful job in bringing that maintenance to the forefront. As we have seen in earlier presentations, the overall maintenance line across all departments was stagnant. So we're catching up, finally catching up as far as maintenance is concerned. And then the planning department, this slide is now obsolete because we had a conditional offer out to a planner. That offer has been accepted, and that planner starts on Monday. So that's been what? Year and a half, two years? It's been a while. Excellent. So you'll see in the municipal monthly, the the space hog, shall we say, is the HR department. So when you, right, when you when you look at the municipal monthly in there, the the consumption of of space is all of the positions that are in the various levels that they're, you know, advertised, interviewing, vacancies, new 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 staff coming in. So the burden on the HR department has been extensive as during during, you know, post post-COVID, shall we say, during COVID and post-COVID. In this budget, positions not funded and or new request for positions that were defunded this year, the the part-time grant writer was taken out of administration. That's about a just under a nineteen thousand dollar savings. Fire department paid called, paid call funds of ten thousand dollars were not being utilized. That was taken out and defunded. Two split positions, we've been two years now trying to hire, excuse me, shared positions of EO ones to cross over between Department of Public Works and the airport, and one between Department of Public Works and the Parks Department. We can barely keep up with with getting non-crossover positions in there. So we defunded those. That was part of the strategy of addressing the wage and classification implementation. And then there was a position that had been funded in the Recreation Department, the water safety instructor of that position is no longer being utilized, and was defunded in this this fiscal year. For new request, we have a police officer. Currently, we're proposed, and I know this is unsettled at this point in time, as to whether we're going to have two or three school resource officers in the school department. If if that decision is that it's dropped down to two, we're going to take one of those officers back in-house and make a request to MDEA to put a second officer into that division, and that would be fully funded. So you'll see both the expense and the revenue associated with that movement on a subsequent slide. Also in this year's budget is two firefighter paramedic positions. That is, to continue the ramp up, it's two of the last four positions to get us to fifty-two, to get us to thirteen per shift manpower. The assessor, so for, I don't know how many years, for a long period of time, we've had a contractual relationship with Old Orchard Beach, where Old Orchard Beach actually employed our lead assessor. And then we had a cost-sharing program for that shared position that was based upon the number of parcels and valuation. And so I think currently, we're fifty-five, fifty-six percent of that contract, something of that magnitude. So in this year's position, this year's budget, you see that we had reduced the contract services by about sixty-five thousand dollars and put that in for a full-time position, fully employed by the city. We view that the option of staying with that contractual relationship is nonexistent in that Old Orchard Beach has not communicated with us for this pending retirement. They've not responded back to our request. So we've moved forward in this year's budget. We are planning to have two full-time assessors for the first time and an administrative assistant. I did have an agreement with our assessor that I would have a one-year notice, and we were notified in January that the position is done in May. So we've moved forward. We've advertised in preparation for all of this work. We've got some highly qualified applicants in there, is very pleased with that applicant pool, and depending upon the council's viewpoint and action on this, we'll move expediently. There's a civil engineering position in here. So currently, we have a public works director is is an engineer. We had a an engineer's assistant who's now a fully certified engineer as well, Matt Provenceur in our organization. We're proposing, as opposed to spending a hundred thousand dollars plus for quality control and assurance with an outside contracted firm, we're proposing to employ a full, their civil engineer's assistant to do that quality assurance and control on the multimillion dollars worth of road construction that we have going each year. So the city council had looked at that favorably when we created the position, and their viewpoint on that was to fund it out of the capital program as opposed to funding it out of operations. So that is the way our budget has been built this year. The other new position is the second police major, and that's why I asked the the police chief to speak on that this evening, as far as its importance, is what that does in the command structure. We have a part-time custodian at just over twenty thousand dollars in there to address the Memorial Gym. And then we have a regular part-time airport maintenance worker. So originally, when we had the, when we took on the maintenance contract for the solar arrays to do that that mowing, it was envisioned that we would hire a shared position that would spend twenty twenty weeks at the airport and then thirty-two weeks at at the Department of Public Works, an EO one position, that would accomplish the summer maintenance at the airport and the solar arrays, and then move over to assist us with the winter operations. We've been unable to fulfill that fulfill that. We have had the ability to find somebody that will work all year, part-time, so that we shifted the resources from one one structure to another. And we're looking at our seasonal use of resources to do something similar in public works, to hire a twenty-hour position year-round, as opposed to trying to hire a seasonal and and then temps in the summertime. This is the slide where we talk about the third school resource officer. So I'm just bringing the the numbers for it because I don't know what this outcome is going to be. Currently, in the school budget, they budgeted ninety-six thousand one hundred and twelve to pick up a hundred and seventy-five student days worth of the use of a full-time officer that's at a cost of a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and five dollars. So if we stay with three school resource officers, I'll pick up eight thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars on the city side of the equation to to fund that. If you go to two school resource officers, we'll put the, we'll put another one of our, we'll take that officer back, so to speak, and put that officer into MDEA. You'll see a revenue of two hundred and four thousand dollars in there. So not only does it pay the fully burdened cost of everything, but that is overtime, holiday, all other allowances, uniforms, everything. The state pays a hundred percent of that. So that's that's the cost difference between fully burdened cost of a base officer versus the and all other that comes with the overtime that they would incur in that position. Sanford Memorial Gym, the school department turned that over to the city pursuant to completing all of their work for the new high school and the remodeling of the former high school into a middle school, and the former middle school into a pre-K through four, and revamping two other elementary schools to have three pre-K through fours and a new middle school. And you want to redo it, Matt? Do it all over again? No, no, none of us do. So so pursuant to that, the So, so pursuant to that, it's no longer needed for the educational facilities as far as the gymnasium space and such under that. City has taken that building back on. Our carrying cost is laid out in this, this slide in detail, it's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents, don't forget the eighty-nine cents, Ronnie, and eighty-nine cents to, to carry that building and the cost associated with that are spelled out, which includes the twenty thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for the part-time custodian. You notice the most impactful elements, obviously, is the heating oil and the electricity for the building as well as the other utilities. And then you have the various inspections and maintenance elements that are ongoing year over year. Currently, we're only booking thirty thousand dollars worth of revenue. There's a known minimum revenue of twenty thousand dollars for the pickleball association that occupies that gymnasium space a large part of the week. Who'd have thought pickleball was that big? But it is. And currently, we have, we have a very conservative estimate of ten thousand dollars on facility rentals. The city council approved a rental fee schedule that really did not, at that point in time, account for the janitorial fees. We'd like to come back and revisit that with you now that we reasonably know that it's, it's a part-time position versus the contracted position and what that expense is. But for right now, we have thirty thousand dollars worth of total revenue projected in there. So net carrying cost of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and then in the capital program, there's three hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred dollars in there, which accounts for complete roof membrane replacement on the entire structure, the three major sections of roof. It accounts for the insurance call-out of re, retipping some of the masonry structure, the bricks, I believe, is predominantly on the west side. And, and again, as the school department has in the past, readdressing the, the granite steps coming into the facility for the tripping hazards. And then the third element in there, in order to be able to perfect a greater level of rental, is to have appropriate floor coverings for the gymnasium such that we can have various, shall we say, more otherwise impactful events on the floor, people coming in with street shoes on without doing detrimental damage to that wood floor. So when you add all of that up, there's five hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars worth of new expense that is in the city's budget this year for the first time for carrying the facility, plus doing the, the capital program in there, less the thirty thousand dollars in revenue. The three hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred dollars, when you get to the option sheet, you will see that we could, you could propose to do that on a five-year debt service aspect as opposed to taking it as a one-year hit in the capital program.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question on this item? And, and Steve, this might be a whole other conversation, but in terms of the revenue, earlier projections were much higher, or when we first took over the building, there was discussion of much higher revenue volume, I feel like. Is our parks programming really looking at ways to put that building more in use? I think of like our NASA on community building and their financials. Are, are we actively working to increase revenue moving forward on that building?
There is. They're, they're, they're waiting to see what's, what's going to take place as far as the floor coverings and, and other aspects, how aggressive we can, we can get with that. We know the gun show wants to come in and such, and that's, that's a yes. There's been a significant number of requests to utilize the facility, so I believe that Brady could keep that facility, you know, really, really moving on, on weekends and such under that, so. But the, the significant revenue, the pickleball people were the, were the biggest piece of that, they, they still are. So for, for daytime utilize, and they want it, they want it Saturdays, they want it Sundays, they want it, they want it, they want it, right? But we want to strike that balance. If we keep them there predominantly through the daytime hours, we turn it over for basketball and such in the evening hours and then other events on the weekends, I think that will be the strongest balance that we can get for multiple use, addressing the community's needs and wants for utilization in that facility, so. Roadway infrastructure, who'd have thought roads were so expensive? So currently, fifty percent of, there's a, there's a mandate within the city charter that says we must, we must raise four percent of the prior year's school and municipal expense budget less the CIP. You have to raise four percent of that as a minimum by charter, and that was part of the chartered evolution whereby the city had strong recognition that they, they were not appropriately funding the capital program, that's how they were balancing off prior year's budgets, it was going to catch up with us at some point in time, it has. So they, they put in first, they went to two percent, and then they pushed that up to four percent with a ramp up. So over a lot, a number of years, there was, there was a half point, a half point, a half point, it got us to the four percent. Beyond that, we know the major road study that was done, I think in two thousand and fifteen, and we started funding that in two thousand and sixteen, there was a voter referendum out there. When the city council looked at that analysis prior to COVID, prior to all of the enormous ramp up and, and impact that we've seen, less on petroleum but more on labor, as far as the road impact are concerned, the analysis showed that we needed to average four million dollars input on our capital program for streets and roads over the next twenty years in order to get our PCI up to the desired eighty-five, so going from sixty-seven or sixty-eight up to eighty-five on a PCI index, a pavement condition index. That was the analysis, the voters supported that analysis and they allowed us to borrow six point two million dollars in that first year, added to the capital program that, that put us over seven million dollars in that first year. Matt put together an incredible portfolio of road projects to be done that year in coordination with utilities. We can't just go pave streets because we have to coordinate with everybody. That road, that road project was, was a success, made very positive public input or feedback from that. And then there was a ramp up. So at that point in time, we were raising about eight hundred and ninety-six thousand of the capital program, the fifty percent for streets and roads, and the council needed to ramp that up to four million dollars per year input beyond the bond, ramp up to get to the four million. This year, we're at the three million dollars as far as the ramp up is concerned, so that's an additional amount that needs to be raised on the capital program, six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to meet that goal. We're at the three million dollars, and next year you go up another half million, and the year after that, another half million, and you, you'll hit your four million cap. No more ramp up at that point in time, but you need, always, you always will need to put in, I forget until the analysis, until somewhere closer to the twenty years where the four percent will actually be calling out that amount of money to go into your streets and roads. But until that point, it's been on the council's commitment to the public to continuously ramp up and be more aggressive and fund, and by doing so, they're able to maintain that four million dollar per year average. The other very large impacting item that was called out and noted in the capital program this year that was different from prior years is under community development. There's two hundred, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there, two hundred and fifty thousand of that that was just, just authorized for one of the two parcels of land. This is a lease purchase agreement, that is to purchase the Notre Dame, former Notre Dame facilities in Springvale, which will house one of the two stations, this will be the substation in Springvale. So that is a multi-year purchase, this is the first-year lease purchase agreement and , and fun, payment on that, that is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the last remainder of that is eighty thousand dollars to carry out the pre-development activities in preparation for a future referendum. So that would be finalizing the surveys, working on the demolition program estimates, as well as finally being able to do the preliminary design that's specific to each of the two sites to include the cost of site improvements so that an overall package of cost can be put in place with the appropriate escalators year over year.
Steve, I just want to let the public know that we've had a committee meeting now on the fire stations for over two years. Over a year alone was just spent looking for land for the two fire stations. And in case you're unaware, there isn't a whole lot of land available in Sanford that could fit a fire station on it. And a lot of our land is wetlands, so you might say, oh, I know such and such a place. Well, we've looked at it. We looked at site after site after site. There's a, a committee that's formed, we meet regularly every month, and we finally found the two sites, one in Springvale and one in Sanford, so we're addressing both communities. The one in Springvale, am I allowed to say where that's located?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay, you did. All right.
Notre Dame.
Notre Dame land that's there. And because of some of the requirements, the city fits into the requirements that they want also. So it's working out really well that we are able to lease that for a three-year period of time. And the one in the nursery that we purchased in South Sanford, that, that would have easily have gone to somebody else, and we would never find another place to put a fire department in South Sanford. There just isn't any land available to us. So I, I, for those people who are saying, why did we purchase the land right now even though we might not be able to do a fire station for a while? If we didn't have that land in the future, we couldn't have fire departments. So that's why we purchased the land right now. Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
I'd also like to put a qualifier on that. The, the other part that made the, the land acquisition so difficult is that in order to maintain the, the city's current extremely favorable ISO rating, we had to look at our response curve. So when the, the city collapsed from three departments into two, and you want to maintain one of those most important aspects to maintain our ISO rating, it's response curves. So if you go in from three response points to, the locations had to meet those response curves, where you can get to all areas of town in, in an equal fashion as far as the response time was concerned. Multitude of other things that build our ISO ratings, that's your insurance ratings, it's what you as a homeowner pay for your insurance rates because of our served districts, so it's our hydrant capacity, it's the type and number of apparatus that we have, it's the response curves, which is, goes to the location of our stations, it goes into our code office, is very significant. One of the larger gains we've made over the last number of years is by doubling the code department staff as well as the, the various aggressive codes that we've, we've written over the last number of years. All of that aggregates together to get your insurance ratings down significantly for our community. So I want to thank all departments, code and fire for all of the work that's gone into that, but I didn't want the general public to sit out there and say, oh, why didn't you think of this piece and this piece? Because there was a very small radii for both of these stations, that the land had to fall in there. All right, this is a bubble burster, so the twenty twenty-four revenue sharing projections. I had pinged off in a communication that had gone out back in December as to what the state was seeing at that point in time. The revenue forecasting committee had not come out with new projections, but nonetheless, I grabbed those numbers. We know how to re-emulate their projection of revenue sharing, and apparently we missed it by fifty-five hundred dollars. So I was still anticipating the state office of revenue sharing as projecting up greater than what they originally had seen in, in December, but those numbers have just come in, come out, and their reprojection based upon all of the, the variables in there is that it's up five thousand five hundred and six dollars more than what I had projected back in December. So there's that number, hopefully you say yes to that tonight, but it's not a, it's not the game changer that I was hoping for. So on the municipal summary, here's the net municipal commitment. You know, you can see that municipal services overall are up by two million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year. Outside agencies, a decrease of six, six hundred and four dollars, again, that's just the chamber dues, it's simply moved into dues as opposed to outside agencies. Debt service went up by forty-five thousand four hundred and six dollars, that's the phase two of the presidential lane extension that was authorized the prior year, that's hitting our debt service this year. Capital reserve is up eight hundred and six thousand dollars. I always think of that as there's four hundred thousand dollars in there currently just for the gymnasium alone, and there's a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars ramp up as in comparison to prior year, so nine hundred thousand dollars in there. Actually, the capital program has been balanced out to call out, absent those two items, less than prior year. And, and without doing harm, I, I will note that. Revenue sharing is up three hundred and four thousand year over year. Municipal revenue is up one million three hundred and twenty thousand dollars year over year, and we have booked an additional use of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on designated fund balance. So that's a seven point, seven point eight percent increase in net taxation call-out of one million four hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars currently in the book.
Steve, not to be nitpicky, but I think you have a negative sign in front of revenue sharing. That's why I use parentheses.
I didn't take credit for the, the beautiful. I'm not taking credit for the.
Sorry, Ronnie.
You can't take credit for the good, you can't take credit for the bad, so.
You can take credit for the good.
Yeah, okay.
Does the, does the increase in municipal revenue include like adjustments in the assessment that you know today?
That, that the, the revenue sharing forecasting committee knows today. So when I re-projected this in December, I was holding a proportional share.
Not revenue sharing, I'm talking about municipal revenue.
Yeah, the, the municipal revenue, yeah, that's, that's, that's everything except for revenue sharing and except for the use of undesignated.
But it's not the assessment adjustment?
No.
It's just, it's other things that we, that you're anticipating. Okay, I wanted to make sure.
There's not, this is, yes, this is not new revenue coming from the twenty million plus.
Okay.
But I have that on the slide.
You're talking about like the automobile excise taxes and all the little stuff.
Yes. Building permits, all of that, yes, pay as you throw. This is just a further summary slide, you've seen this before. We were at twenty-nine million and change last year, we're at thirty-one point five million this year, an increase of two point, two million three hundred and fifty thousand or seven point eight percent. This shows you the categories where those reasonably lie. Employee benefits and insurance is up a hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety. I'm very pleased with that. There's a lot of work that's gone into keeping that, you know, that's, that's, that's a multimillion dollar health insurance policy and such under that. To, to be able to hold it at a hundred and fourteen thousand was, was a significant win-win. Full-time salaries because of change of employment, keeping up with contractual increases as well as wage and classification judge, adjustments that keep us competitive within the region is at one point two million, absent being competitive in the region, HR is going to have a whole lot more work to do because we just bleed staff. It's, it's, it's just amazing. Overtime salaries, increase of fifty-six thousand year over year, part-time salaries an increase of fifty-six thousand, much of which of that is recategorization. Non-contract services up by two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, three hundred thousand of that alone, so there's been decreases in other areas, three hundred thousand of that is just in general assistance anticipated this year. And that's been the housing impacts, the, the minimum thirty-day stay of housing, the number of people that are, that are currently qualified. Supplies are up by a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, equipment is down by sixteen thousand, and again, this is small equipment, this isn't your capital program, but the city has reasonably caught up with their purchases, so that's a positive reflection. Building maintenance you see is up by just eleven thousand dollars, good catch-up there as well. Public Works is the largest increase in building maintenance, their facilities have finally gotten to that point that doors, windows, and other major items need to be addressed. Utilities, this, this is, is up by nearly eighty thousand dollars, those are your heating costs and such, petroleum, natural gas. Electricity is up by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That, that's, that's the impact year over year, and that pinged off in the natural gas, change in natural gas markets. Gasoline and diesel, there's really no increase or decrease as far as the overall volume is concerned, but it's up by a hundred and forty-three thousand because of the target prices that we, we have set. Vehicle maintenance is down by twenty-three hundred dollars, so it's not a huge number, but the fact that it's not escalating, it's stabilized, it's actually going down, I think attests well to the capital program as well as the lease, the leasing that we're doing, some, some elements of leasing that we're doing in multiple departments. Not holding over for administrative purposes those vehicles that we've, we've taken out of the front line because of the significant repair cost, we no longer hold those. And then everything else, other than these categories, out of, out of a thirty-one million dollar budget, there's changes of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in there. So most of the, that's telling you that most of those costs are extremely stable year over year, there's very little change. There's very little change in all of those other categories combined. So what does this all mean? This is the municipal tax rate calculation sheet, this is what we ping off in live. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this this evening. This is the expense side, both the city and the school. So the numbers that I'm currently carrying for the city's recommendation, the school department is carrying for their recommendations, that's on this sheet. They would bring us to a total appropriation if those were approved without amendment at $101,617,000, a 5.9% increase year-over-year. Moving to the second sheet, which is the revenue side. You can see that revenues would go to $62,847 or 3.92% year-over-year for city and school combined. The amount to be raised by taxation would increase by 9.27% in both the utilization of an additional $150,000 for the undesignedated. It would pull the net commitment to $37,769,000 or 9.06%. Before any amendments are made, that would be an anticipated increase of $1.31 from the current $14.80 mil rate. It's a long ways from where we started because originally, we were starting at a mil rate impact of 20.91 or $6.11 was the starting point this year. So the municipal summary for the last two years, as the school had shown slides for last year, without calling out all of these numbers, the municipal commitment, net of operations to be raised for taxation was down by $11,745. We had excellent capacity last year, extremely strong growth in revenue sharing because the state went from 4.5% to 5%. That was a huge increase for us that allowed the capacity in there. This year, we don't have such significant changes year-over-year. So we're at $1.4 million net increase or 7.8%. Last couple of slides, the historical budget analysis. The municipal expense over the last 14 years has averaged 3.72% year-over-year. I would note that, starting back in '08 during the housing crash and such and to that, you can see the lines were above the trend line. You had a large number of years in the middle where it fell below the trend lines. But even in those years, the city was ramping up via charter and council commitment, the capital improvement program. It's been the last three years that you can see the COVID impacts and such were coming above the line. And then the other slide I thought was very interesting to put in here, the capital program on the municipal side. I put all of the various events, as you can see, the jump in the capital program, such as when the charter came in, raising it from 1% to 2%, that came in '12, '13. Then the charter went to 2.5% with a half-point ramp-up that came in. We ramped up and we got to the 4%. And immediately upon that was the borrowing for the streets and roads and the council's commitment to ramp up the CIP on streets and roads to go to the $4 million, which has been the predominance of the increase over the last number of years. So it's averaged 10.36% year-over-year for the last 14 years into the capital program. And the last slide that I believe of substance is, here's the 14-year average. The municipal net call-out for taxation has changed 3.26% year-over-year over the last 14 years. School department at 2.37% and their combined net taxation call-out has been 2.75% year-over-year until we get to this year. And that was addressing the elements of concern or pieces that were asked. I know we're getting short on time. What I'd like to do at this point in time is bring forward the option sheet, a copy of which was in your packet. Now, that's going to format for you, let me... So before I... What this sheet does for us is you have the various elements that we've talked about here tonight. So you have it here by the category. You have both the expense and/or revenue, if there's an expense or a revenue associated with that. You have the option of putting an X, selecting any one of these elements. And then what that will do is translate over to, whoops, I'm sorry. That will translate over to here. So right now, in the blue, this is the manager's recommendation for the budget. This is our starting point here this evening. Anything you change on this cut sheet goes into the council's recommendations. And then you will see immediately what the changes will be from start to finish on the side here. So the major elements that you have under consideration, that you can look at here this evening, let me decrease this a little bit. So we have the changes in revenue sharing, we have the use of undesignated fund balance. Full-time versus contract assessor, I don't know what you can do with that because we don't have the option of sharing that any longer. But nonetheless, it shows you, it's $152,000 versus the $64,000, it shows you that difference. Two firefighter medics, what the cost impact is there. Vacant positions, we had a vacant planner position, that position's authorized, has just been hired. The second police major, that's what the cost is there. We put a cost in here for one police officer. The reason that's in here is an examination of if there are up to 11 officer positions that have become vacant in this current year, how rapidly can we reasonably fill those positions? The discussion would be around, is there any savings at all when you consider that when we have extraordinary holes in our scheduling? As far as personnel, historically, we're able to cover the loss of full-time occupation by filling the overtime positions, but historically, fewer hours than what would be occupied by the full-time position. So that they balance. The other aspect that you need to be mindful of is the city does not budget for all of these separations of retirement. That's a significant cost. So that's covered by the vacancies as well. You have to balance that off as far as your ability to perfect some savings out of filling those positions over the next number of months versus what you might be able to save. Let's see, Department of Public Works, there's an EO4 position that's vacant. EO1 positions, two of those are vacant right now, and a mechanics position. So these are all fully burdened costs. So it would impact your regular wage line, it would impact your health insurance, it'd impact your workers' comp, FICA, and all of those elements. The state of Maine-related positions, we have the first responder in here. That's our employed clinician, fully burdened rate of $110,000. Also, we have opera use of revenues at $110,000, so that position is a wash. But if you take that position out, you lose the revenue, you could redirect it somewhere else, but you're going to see no impact to the budget, right? Fire marshal, fully burdened cost of $120,000, produces direct revenues on plan reviews only at $8,625. The electrical inspector currently is taking home $55,000. We net revenues of $64,000 as anticipated this year. This position, we're actually, we have a request by the current inspector to go from a contracted relationship to an employed relationship. We can do it inside of this existing fee structure as to how we would utilize the position. So I'm not asking for any change or consideration there. All right. Part-time custodian, cost of $20,290. Part-time airport maintenance worker, this is essential because we've cut the shared position, so we have to have the part-time position there for the maintenance contract. Memorial Gym, this is one of your largest savings in the capital program, so we have $392,000 budgeted in there currently. If you convert that over to debt service, you see a first-year payment of just $9,000. So it'll be an interest-only payment. So by the time you do, I would anticipate a fall issue on that. You would have one payment, I believe in March, of $9,000. And then you'd pick up approximately $85,000 per year thereafter for five payments.
So why don't you have the... So if we were to do that, the Memorial Gym you had at $392,000 in the capital reserve, but you only have a net taxation savings of $97,100.
Yeah, so, excuse me, so right now, we have the expense of $392,100 in the capital program for those elements that I called out. But at the bottom of the capital program, we have proposed, if you're going to do it this way, we have mustered over the last number of years $295,000 in reserves from the recreational program. So we've saved. So right now, we've applied 100% of that. So there'll be no reserves left for the operational departments. My recommendation would be if you convert it to debt service, which is far more than equitable and reasonable to do that on a five-year note, I would ask for you to keep your $295,000 in reserves for the and-all others that we haven't even begun to anticipate yet. So that's why you see such a small gain.
So it's not, yeah, so it's not a full gate of $392,000, it's just the $97,100 for this year's?
No, you would net out the difference between the $9,000 expense and the $392,000 reduction. And you're going to save 290, well, you're going to take the $295,000 off your revenue line, but you're going to save that in reserves.
All right.
And through the magic of mathematics, it will show us that.
Gotcha.
Roadway CIP, if you were to not go with the ramp amount in the commitment, there's $673,000 in there that we're raising over and above the charter mandated amount. And then there's also the additional $500,000 that gets us to the $3 million this year. So there's actually $1.1 million in there in your capital program that if you only did the chartered amount, you could knock $1.1 million out of your capital program. But it would completely violate prior commitments on the roadway CIP. Jonathan?
I just had a question around that. Did we have trouble using the complete amount last year?
No.
Okay.
No, we did not.
All right, thank you.
No, so I know that as we ramped up, that was a primary concern. Are we putting money away that we're not able to expend in the fiscal year? That is an absolute no, we're not having that problem. So especially over the last two years of the West Side Village, it was consuming the resources. It was a very difficult situation where we had one bidder. We had to value engineer the heck out of that in order to get it to come reasonably within budgetary constraints. But Matt's been working at this program for an extended period of time now. He has absolute coordination with our utilities, water, sewer, electric utilities, gas, such that the portfolio between survey work, engineering, any acquisition or right-away impacts that need to be addressed, and then the capital expenditure, both maintenance and reconstructive activities, we're able to put that portfolio out on a year-over-year basis with no difficulty.
Any questions?
Well, I guess we have limited time, but are we looking at playing with us a little bit this evening? Or are we pushing that to our next?
Well, I've got some suggestions first, okay? From what I heard, the priorities were. One of the things that I thought was a priority that we really need to revisit the fees at Memorial Gym. So, and I think you suggested that, Anne. And the other thing that was very important that we thought was the radios for the police department. That was on our priority list. The other thing was the vacant positions. I'm pretty sure that we all agree that that was a need, that we, those are ones that have been there that we really need to fulfill, that's on your list, tops with vacant positions. Then we had the, I think with the elementary, the third SRO, I don't think that is a priority this year. So I think the alternative that you were speaking about is probably a better thing. The other thing I think we've spoken about before is bonding Memorial Gym to get all that work done so that would come out of this budget. So if we could take a look at that and see what that looks like.
I have a quick question on Memorial Gym.
Yes, Bob.
So I understand the presentation, Steve. And you're looking at keeping the whole $295,000 and then bonding for the total amount for the renovation. Again, that nets out at $97,000 and change. What if we took another $100,000 from, we may not be there, but I'm exploring the possibility here. If we took another $100,000, in other words, that reserve, I think you called it a reserve, recreational reserve, would be dropped to $195,000. And you used, that would give you, you use that $100,000 to lower the, you know, in other words, it becomes a revenue that can be used to lower the overall tax rate. Is that a possibility? I guess that's my question, Steve. Something like that a possibility?
I'd kind of wanted to go into parks no matter what.
Well, if we're looking at someone's job as opposed to lowering cash reserve for recreation, and I know we're not at that point, but if we're in that situation, I'm wondering if those funds can become available.
So why don't we save that for the end to see, we'll get all the other things that we think.
Well, so the answer to that is yes. You could use any portion of, all or a portion of those reserves, yes.
So that's a little pocket to explore if we need to go down that road. And other people may want more information about what that means to the Recreation Department and the program. I think that's totally appropriate.
Are we all, we have to reach consensus for this, this isn't a voting time. When we vote, it'll be at a regular meeting. So are we consensus about bonding Memorial Gym? Okay.
Just as an activity, yes.
All right, so keep going? Okay. The fire marshal, I know that there is an opening, so that person would not lose a job. But the fire marshal's position, we would like that taken out because we could use the state thing. So are we in consensus that the fire marshal is something that we want to have removed?
Well, the fire marshal position is occupied at this point in time.
Is what?
Is occupied at this point in time.
But there's an opening in the fire department, so he wouldn't lose a job. His contract says he can go back to the fire department.
He can.
Yes, so.
That's not technically true because of the way that they were hired by the contract. So you wouldn't be able to just bump back. There would be more complications to that than just bumping someone back into that position.
And I think that that would need to be figured out, but...
And if I'm afforded the opportunity, I would like to speak about the fire marshal before we talk about removing that position because of the value that position has brought to the city for many, many decades. That is not a new position, it is a very old position.
And I don't think at this point we're ready to discuss it, but we'll get back to you on that.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So we have a consensus on that, that's something. All right. The other two we were looking at, and we had discussed this before. It's, at this point, is it appropriate for us to hire two firefighter paramedics? So that was another thing that we had talked about in the past, Bob?
You know, there's a lot of history around these two positions. And how personally I feel about it is I already voted to fund these positions. I think it was two years ago. And then those funds were used for leadership positions, as I understand it, and not to fund the two firefighter paramedic positions. That tells me as a counselor that really the two firefighter positions, I know they're there in, via contract negotiations, it's one of the reasons why they're here. But it's shown me pretty distinctly that those positions are not needed because they were funded and the funds were used for something else. That's my understanding of it. because they were funded and the funds were used, uh, for something else, that's my understanding of it. So, uh, I feel two ways on this. First of all, the taxpayers already funded these positions. Secondly, that the city council has fulfilled its contract obligations by funding those positions two years ago. What happened after that, you know? And, and I'm really, after those discussions last year that we had, and, and that move, I, I'm really, uh, not happy that they're back in the budget, to be honest with you, so...
Okay.
I, I'm fine with removing them from the budget.
And let me tell you what I think our goal is. We think, keeping in mind that my first statement at the beginning, before we even looked at the budget, was how can we provide the needing services for our citizens while keeping in mind it has to be affordable? Now, I do know a, a large amount of people have only gotten a three percent increase in their salaries. So I think we have to be really careful when we're looking at a budget that is going to be a huge increase for the average person in Sanford. So we were trying, we were talking before, off and on, we talked between meetings and stuff, and, um, we were thinking if we could get this down to about six, and I, let me get the term right, neck to, neck, text, no.
Net to taxation.
Next to taxation, my tutoring.
Net.
Uh, net to taxation of six to six-point-five, we would be okay. That doesn't just mean the municipal side, it means the school side also. So that's almost, in order to do that, that's almost a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar cut for the schools and for the municipal side. We cannot tell the schools what to cut, we can just say this is the bottom line. And so, but for the municipal side, we can say what our priorities are, and what we did was we picked some stuff, at least I did, I picked some stuff that would come up to almost seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. Um, so it would cover, um, our, our part of it without dismantling, um, a whole lot of the municipal side. So we don't have those two firefighters, paramedics right now. The fire marshal, uh, wouldn't, hopefully would not lose the job, there's a process to bring him back in, and I guess that's what I understood from his contract, and the bond for, uh, Memorial Gym would cover us. And so we're only looking at three possibilities. Um, so Steve, if, and I'm open to talk about other things, um, you know, if there's other, like for the two paramedics, if there's other funds you have that could cover, um, that cost, I, I'd be willing to, uh, take a look at that, but I, I think that we need to get those numbers way down. And I think what's, if it's fair for the municipal side to take out seven-hundred thousand, I also think it's fair for the school side to do the same. Is, is that a consensus of, did I read everybody correctly when we were talking about all that? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I actually think after our discussion the prior week, and we talked about four, and the shock of four, because we know all the problems both sides are facing, it's, you know, a mental process over the last couple of weeks, of, of last week of thinking, well, what does make sense? You know, and what could be reasonable? And I think, you know, with a little bit of conversation, six-and-a-half percent, um, was reasonable.
We realized, we were looking at four, and we're coming up to six-point-five, so that was...
And that's before we see assessment numbers, and I get that, it, but to be honest with you, it seems like every time we've had extra income or anything over the last few years, we've given it to adding to our budget, rather than giving it to relieving the budgets of the homeowner. And I think I'd like to see any additional assessment relieve the budgets of the homeowner personally.
Madam Mayor, may I comment?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Um, so just a, a couple of things. One, I want to comment on the two firefighter positions that are, that would be new positions. And it's my understanding, having been through the budget process and looking at adding, ramping up, if you will, to use Steve's term, is that when it's financially not feasible, we're, we have to relook at those positions and part of that ramp-up plan. And when I look at the change to net to taxation compared to what our historical change has been, it seems unreasonable to add positions, so that, that's where I'm in agreement there. And then the fire marshal position, which is difficult to talk about, because it is a filled position, so I want, want to recognize that, is really about the fact that from a, a municipal standpoint, what I look at is that we're one of four communities in our state, and other communities within our state are booming with economic development and, uh, plans and projects seemingly maybe better than us. And so when we talk about that position itself, it seems that might be an area that we could remove the position and still work with the state in compatible, similarity with other communities that are doing it successfully. So that's kind of my thinking on that particular piece. If both the school and the city remove a seven-hundred thousand dollars, I believe the net to be raised by taxation is a five percent increase also, not a six, just...
Yeah, get us down closer, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, um, I know we, we discussed briefly these, these numbers. And I think I said at that time, and I just want to repeat it, that I'm in general disagreement. I'm in general agreement, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I'm in general agreement with the council's position on this. However, I would still like to see some final numbers, and if we're going to take seven-hundred thousand dollars, uh, and some change on the schools, I'd like to see what that looks like. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, and, uh, before, before we, we approve that, that's a large sum of money. Uh, so I'd like to see how that affects, uh, the educational programs, uh, in the, in the community. I think we have enough information on the municipal side that Steve's presented with us, so we can certainly sort that out from that, but I, I would like to see what that, uh, what that means for, for the schools.
That sounds excellent, thank you.
We have like four minutes.
Got about two minutes left.
Do we want to give ourselves a little break to use the restroom or something?
Yes.
Is there any other comment before we?
Well, we're not there, Mayor, though, we're not, because the, uh, bonding is actually only a hundred-thousand-dollar impact to the net to taxation, unless we go with councilor stack pulls, we still have more to work to do, just to make sure we...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. All right, so, um, at almost six, seeing as we have another meeting, we need a break. Um, so I'm going to close this meeting, and we will be...